Tom, at 6:00 PM, Council, City, and Districts, now the meeting is ready for session. Tonight's opening ceremony will be given by Todd Cato. Pageant, our hand, here in front.
Let us pray. God, we thank you so much for the lives that you give to us. We thank you for this wonderful world that you've created. Thankful for this place that we call home, and we are grateful for the good things that are happening here. We pray your continued blessing upon us individually, collectively. Father, we pray for your wisdom, we pray for clear vision. Father, we are grateful for these people who serve this city, and their dedication and their sacrifice. Again, we just pray that you would watch over us in all things. May your spirit be with this group, may your spirit be with us as we live our lives. Thank you so much for what you've done for us, and the grace, and the mercy, and the compassion that you've demonstrated to us through your son, Jesus Christ. It's in him that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I'm glad to witness the life of the United States of America, and to the people for which we stand, one nation, one God, in the business of delivering justice and sorrow.
Council's number two, the consent agenda, which is agenda item number two.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of consent agenda.
Have a motion from Councilman Spindler, second from Councilman Malburn, all in favor, by saying aye. Todd, pose like sign. Motion carries. Agenda item number three, public hearings on the multifamily residential public ordinances of Brooklyn.
Mayor, council, you're hearing now to receive your court public hearing with consideration of ordinance to amend the code of ordinances, chapter 28, zoning, Article 3, Zoning Districts, section 2830 and 2831, and also Article 5, Development Standards, section 2854-2. This change for minimum exterior construction standards from 75% to 100% machinery, which this is brick and stone. This change will ensure the quality of development of future apartment complexes and constructions. We have eliminated the stucco, cementous composition of floorboard. Concrete machinery units are material of similar characteristics. Planning and zoning review this and recommend approval, staffs recommend approval. I'll answer any questions, Congress.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to this agenda? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Questions, discussion with councilor?
May I commercially approve the change?
Second. Have a motion from Councilman Spindler, second from Councilman Rowley, all in favor, by saying aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries, agenda item 4A, Affordable Housing Program. Mr. Speaker.
Mayor and councilmembers, tonight we would like to give an update on the status of our Affordable Housing Program. We held a meeting of local builders back in November and explained attempt, asked if they were interested to submit a bid for lots in December. We only had one contractor submit bids on a lot, and it wasn't an acceptable bid. They didn't fulfill their requirements of the bidding process. So, we didn't accept that one. So, we're back to square one again. Not quite square one, but started the process a little bit different. We were fortunate to have another fresh set of eyes to review the program and make some recommendations, and we want to present those to you tonight. The bid process is just that. It's a point in time, and when it's over, it's over. And Texas state government code allows cities to dispose of surplus properties in several ways. And one of those ways is to give it to an affordable housing program, which we have. So, rather than do the bid process staying within the parameters of that law, we can allow contractors to come in and just choose the lots that are available, and let them look at those lots, and if it's a lot they want to build on, they can pick those, and then we'll enter into contract with them. The process is going to be an ongoing process. It's not going to be just that point in time. Once they do select those lots, then that contract is going to be a lot tighter than it was before. And during that process, what we want to do is put something in writing. We, in the past, have been doing this just by catch, as catch can, for lack of better terminology. But we want to, we need something documented, we need something in writing, we need something approved by the council, so this could be an ongoing program. And that's what we want to present to you tonight. Plus, if you're thinking that we're going down the right path, then we'll come back with a structured program that you would view approved in a later meeting. And some of those things that we want to talk about is that contractor and builder needs to be sure that he understands that this is going to have to be an affordable house. It's going to have to be sold to a low to moderate income household. We propose to use those same parameters, same guidelines that we use for our HUD program. When we do our rehab program, we check income to make sure those folks fall within the parameters set by the Census Bureau and by HUD, and that they are low to moderate income households. The discussions we've had with builders in the past is there is not enough incentives for those builders to get involved in this program. So, some ideas that we had, if you all have any others, we'd be sure, sure like to hear those, is to eliminate fees, inspection fees, building permit fees for the contractor. Allow him three or four dumpsters. Now, this would have a bigger impact on public works budget, but if we allow them to three or four free dumpsters during the construction of that process, that's several hundred dollars there that will be an incentive for the builder. We might find some that the, if it wasn't an existing house on that lot, then they would have to do a water tap and sewer tap. I would imagine that 90% of these lots, though, have had a house on upon time or another. There are a few parcels of land that can be subdivided into three or four different lots. If the contractor chooses to do that, then there would have to be sewer and water taps provided for those new lots, and the possibility of waiving those fees for the builder. If that builder followed all those guidelines and reassured us that the house was sold to a low to moderate income household, then he can get reimbursed those fees rather than just giving to you upfront. So, that's some of the things we've been thinking about. If you think we're going down the right path, then, like I said, we'll put together a formal document for you to approve at future meetings. And we'll have another meeting with all partners, we think bankers, realtors, vendors, and builders, all here, and explain the program, and see if we can get this thing started.
Thank you, Tom. Questions, discussion?
On the dumpsters, I guess that'd be probably your biggest actual cost.
Yes, sir.
What's our true cost for dumpster?
David?
It depends on the weight. It varies, but in general, it's going to be 300 to 400 out of the $700 deal for the largest one.
So, realistically, we have $900 to $1,200.
If you say 300 or 400, yes, sir.
And so, the premise there is that all the other ones are revenue that we're foregoing. This is one where we actually have cost incurred. Correct, all right? So...
And if there's a tap fee that we have to place, then that public work would still have a cost there for the saddle and the, sure, the taps.
And I read your memo, right? These are, the words were very strict, I guess, and they said he could do. It doesn't mean that we would do all of those things, obviously. So, as you guys are meeting with your stakeholder groups, you're going to hear, because there's a point that makes this project worth doing to the developer or not. And, I mean, obviously, on a $90,000 structure or $80,000 structure, he's got certain profits built in naturally. Getting a free lot cuts into that, or adds to that value. Any of these things add to that value to make it worth his time to do it. But at the end of the day, you've got to have a buyer, right? So, that's going to be where the other, the other issue is.
One of the things we'd like to do also is, T-Cock has got a program out there where they do a transitional program to get people out of public housing into homeownership. And we would like to contact them, get more information about that program, and get involved in that process. And that'll be, I think, the last time they had a class, they had 20 potential homeowners graduate from that class. So, we could tap into that resource and make some recommendations to builders and to the buyers. We think that would happen, too. Plus, the $90,000 cost is not realistic now. When Councilman Malburn and I and Tom Aitken went down to Fannie Mae years ago and talked about affordable housing, it was $65 a foot back then. In talking to the builders, that's not realistic. A active builder had just finished three houses in the lot, and they were 1,400 square foot houses, and they were selling for about $80 a square foot. So, that price escalated that much, and that's still probably going to be within our four building range. So, we're still chasing that also. We think that that $65 a foot is not realistic today. They just can't build a house with that. So, that number's going to blow somewhat, but we'll still stay within that four building range.
How many lots we have available?
We have 51 parcels of land, and several of those parcels are more than one lot. They could be subdivided, then, so getting around to 50 foot lots.
I know we're trying to, you know, get homeowners occupied. Would we consider opening up a program for people to build rentals?
I asked, we've talked with council about that, and the idea was not to provide rental stock, was we wanted to provide homeownership. But if that's the direction you all want us to go in, we can certainly explore that also.
Yeah, to me, so, number one, we've talked about we need affordable rental property here for, you know, paying apartments and stuff like that. You know, what you're getting into in these size houses is just finding qualified buyers that should be qualified to the secondary market, at least, and it's harder, it's a lot harder than it was back when the things were really wrong, were getting wrong. And so, you know, I think at some point in time, we'll lose some of these things, unless the market changes, we're going to have to look at some of those options for builders to have some infill, get us some tax pay on the ground that are new, and, you know, they're going to have a little more stake in that piece of property at $80 a square foot, compared to what they will, you know, normally, so...
Councilmember Spindler, I want to make sure that we have an opportunity to research that rental property may call for a different program.
I understand.
Just because of the parameters of the statute of giving away property. But we can find a shoe to make that bid.
I wouldn't mean to put it in, you know, anything now, but just, I think, to get some of these infill lots built on, put some back on our tax value, we can get after with that somewhere down there.
You know, and if a builder decides to, he doesn't want to build an affordable house, has the council declare that parcel of land surplus, allow for bids, and the last couple times, we've been pretty successful with them. And as you saw tonight on the consent agenda, there was a tract of land that we just, the council declared surplus, we took bids on, and we got $9,000 with a tract of land. Another one, which you declared surplus over 100 Hickory, and that neighborhood there, we suspect that we're going to get at least a great value for that lot, too. So, that's a way to get it out of the Affordable Housing Program and give a builder or a developer an opportunity to build on that lot, if you declare a surplus.
Tom, maybe another way of saying it is that there are two components to this program.
Sure.
One's for affordable housing, one's for infill development. And depending on what happens, which side of the tract they choose, different levels of incentives are available based off statutory requirements. So, if that's council's, we can look at that option. We could have multiple paths for what the intended purpose of the lot is, and how acquisition would take place there.
I mean, 90%, probably greater than 90% of these tracts are in the portable, in the CDVG areas, correct?
Not the CDVG areas, but that area that the council declared as a redevelopment area, right, okay. The green area on the map there, I know that's difficult to see, but I think there may be six out of that 51 parcels that are outside of that area, so the majority of them are in that redevelopment area.
Tom, I'd like to see us quantify any lots are vacant versus, we may need some demolition costs, so we can help look at our cost exposure on that as part of this package.
Very, very few have really been...
I'll give you...
Because, I mean, that's how they got off here, right?
But some of the demolition costs are already gone. We've already done one. I'd just like to see if we've got any additional cost exposure on the dumpster aspect.
Anything else? Tom, you have what you need?
Yes, sir, we do, and we'll get back to you first with the same meeting, right now, we're walking to our margins.
Yeah, and, you know, again, we throw this out there, and, again, trying to find ways to develop these infill lots, and if this doesn't work, we'll move on to the next thing. It's an important issue, and appreciate your all's efforts on continuing to build a little on that.
Sure.
And thank you, Courtney, for your input. Okay, agenda item 4B, zoning board, Mr. Hannah.
Thank you, Mayor and council. With the resignation of Matt Hanley, we have a vacancy on the joint airport zoning board, and so staff is requesting that council identify an alternative member to be an active board member, served with Councilman Goff.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, and we're not letting this Council, Rowley, put that position.
Have a motion from Councilman Spindler, second from Councilmember Goff, all in favor, by saying aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries, agenda item 4C, capital improvement projects. Mr. Hannah.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'm going to go through this presentation, and I just ask y'all to stop if you have a question. The information's in your backup, and primarily what I want to talk about today is kind of a continuation of those items that we touched upon at the council retreat. Those items that I think need a little bit more further input from council before we pull trigger on things, or things that are ready to go now that just need an approval. So, to start with, I want to talk a little bit about the allocation of funding that we discussed at the council retreat. Start with the Forest Park, Rain Day Fund, and the Park Maintenance Fund. Staff had originally identified about $115,000 to be pulled from that. And based on council retreat, we discussed using the money that was originally set aside for the police department this fiscal year to be used for that purpose, so I'd like just formal, a formal blessing of that. I also wanted to set aside the remaining portion for costs for contingency for the police station, design costs, things that were not to be used as a credit card, but, you know, it's an old building. We get in that building, we think we've identified all the issues, but we may not have. So, this is the, oh, we didn't know there was asbestos underneath that sometime, you know? So, I'd like to earmark those funds for that purpose, that council's approving. So, I'd like council's action on that tonight.
Do we need action specifically on that, or just, I mean, because I think that's right in line with where we were at the retreat.
As long as, as long as that's the mind of council, I think we can move forward.
Any discussion there? Questions?
Just to be sure, the Forest Park, the total budget's $157,500, or that's what's coming out of Park Maintenance at $115,000? At least, the total's about $270,000.
That's correct.
Yeah, it's not coming out of rainy days, it's coming out of this budget for the police station.
I just need to make sure you approve moving that money from general fund, $115,000, to that Park Maintenance Fund, since that wasn't what was originally budgeted, so I'll have that.
Let's just have a motion. Clean it up.
I'll make a motion that personally move the funds, or I guess, do we need to approve the expenditure in moving the funds?
Well, the expenditure of $325,000, it's already been approved in the budget. So, really, we just need a reallocation of that to the Forest Park and project contingency for the police station.
I'll make that motion, and we move the funds from the, I guess, the Rainy Day Fund to the Forest Park maintenance.
From the general fund?
General fund.
To Park Maintenance.
Park Maintenance. That's my motion.
Second.
Have a motion from Councilman Spindler, second from Councilmember Goff, all in favor, by saying aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and council. The second item, the next item in this presentation, the street projects, one of the things that we identified that we thought we'd be able to do is use a section 108 loan through HUD to leverage our CDVG allocation through a debt issuance process. And we visited with HUD, a Fort Worth office, and HUD said, yeah, you can do that. In fact, many communities do. So, what we'd like to do is, of our $309,000, we'd like to take roughly, this is an approximation because we haven't actually gotten the origination or anything like that for a sort of loan. But from a planning number standpoint, about $129,000 of that to be used for debt service, that could be leveraged about $1 million over a 10-year period. And then, that $1 million would be used for the street, the listing of street projects that were discussed at the council retreat that are all identified D. Of that, it's about $3 million, $2.3 million of road projects. Of that 3.3 million, about 1.6 is CDVG funds eligible. So, we'll have more eligibility than we actually have funding for. The reason why we're not leveraging all of it for debt service is one of the things that the public hearing, or rather, the advisory panel, citizen advisory panel, said about this concept was, we're okay with the concept, think it makes sense, but we don't want to see emergency rehab go away completely. So, there's about $180,000 left over, CDVG funds. $100,000 of that could be used for emergency rehab, $80,000 for administration, project administration, personal dollars. I don't, I don't need action on council's tonight, but before we go meet with HUD and talk in greater detail, and start getting paperwork and stuff processed, and amending our five-year plan for next fiscal year, I want to make sure that the policy board for this community is comfortable with this concept, because it's a big departure from how we used CDVG funds in the past. It will go through a public hearing process, it will go through a planned process, and if you want more information on that, and I'll invite Mr. Speaker to explain what that process is, but ample opportunity for public discourse and discussion. But before we embark it, I just want to make sure you guys are comfortable with that concept.
Discussion.
But should we use part of those funds to help pay for an extra code enforcement in those areas, for those, for that checks that it won't?
Those funds, $80,000, that $80,000 for administration costs, that's what that helps goes to pay for. Now, we may have to look at how things are paid for, what that $80,000 is apportioned to. So, it could be the next fiscal year, we come back and say, okay, we're picking up this person to help administer this part of this program, and we're taking on the code enforcement officer. I don't have an answer to that question yet, but I want council to realize that there's $80,000 for personal dollars. We have ample need to spend that on 100% of our administration cost, so that's not, it's not an issue. Our total money being used for administration won't diminish. We may divvy it up differently, but our total, our total administration portion of CDVG funds won't diminish.
Again, I just want to applaud staff for bringing this concept, and we know that our ongoing street maintenance is an ongoing struggle for our community, just from a budgetary standpoint, we have had issued it in the past, and continue to, that fund continues to dwindle, and this puts another $1 million in it, which is pretty innovative in the thinking, so thank you. Anything else from council?
The next item touches upon the water rate design, and as if communicated at council to retreat and through other means, that staff's of the opinion that we ought to do this. And there's a graph that shows peak demand, plant capacity, and annual rainfall. The intent of that is just to show that as it rains more, people use less water, and there's, because that makes sense, right? Because it's rain, you don't have to irrigate as much. But the purple line on that chart is the plant capacity. The real thing is that we have a finite treatment capacity. We may have a lot of water rights in Texoma. We have a lot of storage capacity, but we have a finite treatment capacity. It is much cheaper in the long run to explore the implementation of conservation measures than it is to build a new plant. Now, you can argue the effectiveness of conservation measures, frankly. During the, two years ago, in the Metroplex, when conservation measures were being implemented, water use actually went up, because they hadn't had a history of implementing conservation measures, so people would water like the devil on the day they were able to water. They'd overwater. And so, people have realized, okay, you have to have, you have to have a culture of conservation, you have to start installing it all the time. So, what I'm looking for counsel on this particular item is, is there an interest on council's part to go forward with the rate design study, or is that something they'd rather see us handle at the staff level and not look at the adoption of conservation rates?
Discussion, council.
And for clarity, I guess at the council retreat, y'all had, I guess, was it five, maybe six funding opportunities for our $28 million in needs? Which one of those was your, was your recommendation, if under the fixed rate model?
Right.
The study, doing the study and looking at the conservation, and also the commercial versus residential subsidy there is what you recommended me tonight, but one of those, all of those other models do fund those projects.
We, yeah, we can fund all of our projects through a fixed rate proposal that we absolutely can do that, yes.
And one of those five, or was?
It's a recommended, it's a recommended proposal. And that is a, that's a $10,000 per view. We're going to scrub all that from a analysis standpoint, and really deep delve into it before we finalize the dollars and cents on that, but in theory, yeah, we don't have to change our rate, our rate structure model to fund our projects.
Questions?
You know, I don't think I changed much, just that we've got other needs to spend money for, for a study right now for conservation. I understand conservation's going to be needed in the future, no matter how much water we have, but, you know, a lot of the projects we're lining up today have some immediate needs, but if that cost is, I think, $20,000, $30,000, $40,000 to go about waste tools on a project for working on right now, so, you know, I haven't changed in my, you know, to the right now, it's not going to be needed.
Kind of in the same camp as Councilman Spindler. I thought we were talking about 50K, reasoning, am I wrong? Was it lower than? It's less than that. The actual bill's 36, I think I quoted y'all 40 something, in the meeting, maybe 45. I'm just, I'm not sure that we can't make intelligent decisions right here with our own staff, and come up with that, and I'm open for you selling it to us, or whoever, but I still don't, I'm still not sure that's good spending of money. I would ask this, is that if council's mind is made up, that's one thing, and as I mentioned, you guys, I'm not going to twist your arm on this topic, but if you, if there's, if you don't have enough information to make a decision yet, that's a different question entirely. And I'd like to be able to bring you more information to make a decision, if that's where your mind is. If your mind is made up, we'll move forward.
Me personally, I think that you made a great presentation at the retreat, and I think the supplemental stuff, especially the, I guess, the articles that you'd sent out, the emails from other cities, I guess, from the state that implemented it. At the end of the day, we know what our costs are. We run a lean operation. We have $28 million in needs, of which 24, I guess, you can take out the water meter deal, 24 are absolutely must haves in this community in the near term, and so we've got to fund that. So, we know what our operating costs and our future capital costs are, how we fund it, at the end of the day, you still got to fund it. And for me, that's where I lean on, on fixed rate, you know? I just think that's the way we can get there, based on what the, y'all already had, so...
Very good. We'll move forward then with the fixed rate analysis, and also, anybody else have any comments?
So, but, I guess, a couple of things, as y'all are starting to dive down into that in the retreat, I recall, we wanted to really revisit the multifamily rate should be the same as... same as regular residential, if I'm saying that correctly.
Correct.
And then potentially, the value of commercial seemed a little light on the fixed rate, I think, was the discussion. That probably doesn't add a lot to, to it at the end of the day, but may lower it by fifty cents or a dollar, perhaps, to the residential, maybe heighten that much. But with the commercial side, that's two things that I would jump from the discussion. Anything else as they're looking at the, so, and I guess we're looking at, we'll be taking action on a rate for starting in twenty fifteen's budget. Is that right?
Yeah, we're going to put, we'll put together a calendar. You know, the general rule of thumb is, if you're going to have a rate increase, don't do it so it's affected to the summer months. People need an opportunity to get used to it. So we'll put a calendar together that will show it, tie it to the debt service schedule, so we're not doing too much too fast, and also implement it in a logical, meaningful way, so we're not digging people during the hottest years of our period. Okay, thank you very much for that. The next thing that I'd like to get some further direction on is this building and city hall annex. In the budget for this fiscal year, there's money for carpet, paints, and furniture. We do think there's enough money to re-carpet and provide some additional furniture for a entryway where the, where the citizen impacts and interfaces with the city environment, not for staff, but for that, you know, where the citizen interfaces with the city. But what I'd like to do is, is look at that portion of city hall annex that is not necessarily for the employee, but is also where the citizen interfaces with the city, particularly the permit department. There's a section there where accessibility is an issue for us, frankly. We don't have a ramp system that I think is where we need to be. There's not a counter where a customer can come up to. You open the door, you either step down and go through this ramp system that's kind of clunky, and you end up dumped down right in front of someone's desk where they do their regular business. It's an awkward feeling. It's frankly, it's not a very welcome feeling. So I want to get a feel for what that cost is. So what I'd like to do is go out and solicit bids to deal with those portions of the building that are kind of highlighted in yellow on your bright line here on your sheet. And also get quotes, solid quotes for flooring, for city hall and the annex and paint as well. And then come back with a list of, here's what this is, and here what this is, and here what this is. The numbers that we have really were planning dollars that were put together back at the first part of twenty thirteen from a carpet standpoint. So they're coming up, they're over a year old now. I just want to make sure I have good numbers going into bid. We get bid to bid anyways because the dollar amounts that size. So this will give us firm numbers and a firm understanding of what our projects might be. Council can then award those portions of the project that they want. That's what I'd like to do. I didn't want to surprise you and come back and go, hey, I got half of the annex redesigned, too, when I was at it. I just want to be openly upfront, what I'm hoping to do, so.
Discussion. So kind of in summary there, you're going to prioritize where the public, the areas of these two buildings that the public engages the most, where the need is, and then come back with, with budget for that.
That's correct.
Or actual costs.
Actual costs.
And then council?
Great. Thank you very much for that. Final, final item is, is kind of twofold. The first is Parkdale Ground Storage Tank, we have a budget for this year. Frankly, we woefully misjudged the cost of that project by tuna with magnitude without three, maybe maybe two, two to three. And so we don't have the funds to cover Parkdale. But we do have the funds to cover Atchison, which is a, we did, we just completed an analysis of all of our elevated, all of our storage tanks. And Atchison is actually the one next in the list, and so you've got to do this one next because it's the worst condition. So we'd like to spend the Parkdale money for this year on Atchison. The silver lining of this whole thing, we didn't get this clearly communicated throughout the council meeting, is that the airport tower is really in actually pretty good shape. And so we can tighten some guide wires and some nuts, put a new coating line, and this is going to be good to go for ten, fifteen years. Neither David or I thought that was going to happen. We thought that tower was going to be one that has to go. So we take a one point three million dollar project and reduces it substantially to the point where we think we can take, do Parkdale and the airport tower without an increase in our original concept and total budget for storage tanks. So just a heads up, that's what's going on. The thing that I want, really need council action on tonight, I want council authorization to incur engineering fees for the Texon pump station project. And David can answer specifics from a timeline standpoint, which is the unit of your presentation. But overall, you're looking at about ten percent of the project. I think you're looking at about seven hundred and fifty, seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars of project fees, size of them. We're obviously not going to incur that all at once. But as you can see from the calendar, we need to get the ball rolling because the design phase is here for more. You know, we need to get that started. We do have funds in our budget to do that. It's part of our last bond issuance for the water project. So the money's there to spend on the project. I just want to make sure council's aware that we're spending that purpose and get your approval to do that.
Are you done?
How much water can we move today?
The best we've done in the pump station that we have with a single pump is when the lake is high, it's about nine to nine and a half million gallons a day. When it's low, it drops to about eight and a half.
And then the proposal is to take that volume of the water?
That'll be part of this study. But it's probably basically the water rights with growth, and there will be future pump slots built into it. So that hasn't been determined, but it would be something much more than what we have right now.
Two or three, at least.
And we would probably pump more in the spring in order to get the better water out of Texon, which is what we've always done. We can get more water in the spring from the Washatah. And then Grandell will be pumped to the summer with the storage in Lake Grandell.
That's all I have.
For council, I appreciate you allowing us to go through that process.
Council now go into executive session, send chapter five, I want the Texas Government Code to seek advice from the city attorney regarding the Senator King West Sears, and also seek advice from the city attorney regarding the Barton case. Also go into executive session to discuss real property in regards to the Foster property. The time is six thirty-eight PM.